I now call the Monday, December 13th, 2021 meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to order. This evening's invocation will be led by Commissioner Gary Roberts, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Vice Chair Larry Rankin. Would you please stand?
Thank you. Father, give us the wisdom and knowledge we need to have to make decisions and things we do. But one thing that comes to mind right now is a tornado disaster in the Indian or Kentucky, Tennessee area. Be with those people that are homeless. May people volunteer, give them the energy and strength to help those people out. May God be with them. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated.
Number four, can we get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Rutherford.
Here.
Commissioner King.
Here.
Commissioner Roberts.
Here.
Commissioner Griffiths.
Here.
Commissioner Laney.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Rankin.
Here.
Chairperson Surtur.
Here. Number five is approval minutes. We have two minutes to approve. We have minutes from the November 4th, 2021 work study, which was a joint session with council. And we also have the November 8th, 2021 regular session minutes. Both require separate motions. So is there a motion to approve the November 4th, 2021 work-study joint session minutes?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the work-study joint session meetings from November 4th, 2021.
Is there a second?
No second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Any abstentions? All right, moving on to November 8th, 2021 regular session minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, I approve. I move that we approve the minutes of November 8th, 2021.
Is there a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? Abstentions? All right. Moving on to announcements. Does staff have any announcements? I do want to publicly just thank Commissioner Sandy Griffiths and Vice Chair Larry Rankin. At the work-study meeting and for our regular session meeting, I was fighting COVID. And so Vice Chair Rankin filled in for me during the work-study. And Commissioner Griffiths actually filled in for both myself and Vice Chair Rankin for the regular session. So thank you very much to both of you.
Our pleasure. Thank you.
And you did a very good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And seeing no other announcements, we'll move on to public hearing items.
I have one announcement, if that's possible.
Please, go for it.
I'd like to address the issue that's been going on with CAFMA and the ambulance response. I had some discussions with some of the people within the organization. And if you go to www.cazfire.org, you can click up on the button and there's a lot of information with respect to what's going on with this ambulance response issue. If you check out the Get Informed section, there's really good information. It talks to you about what Level Zero ambulance response is. There's the audio dispatch information on there. There's also a really good FAQ to educate the public. And if you'd like to get involved, I've had a number of citizens ask me how they can get involved. There is information directly there. Governor Ducey is the only one who can give the authority for the emergency certificate of necessity. There are some talking points on there, and it gives you the links as to who you can email and how that works. So again, www.cazfire.org.
Thank you, Commissioner King. Moving, anybody, any...
It doesn't matter.
Any other announcements? All right, moving on to public hearing items. Both of these will be heard at the same time, and we'll read both of them into the record. So the first one is General Plan Amendment 21... Excuse me. First one will actually be heard separately. Second one and the action item, Preliminary Development Plan 21-010, will be heard together. But first thing on the agenda is General Plan 21-001, Discussion, Consideration, and Possible Action Regarding the December 13th, 2021 Draft of the Proposed Town of Prescott Valley General Plan 2035. Wayne Bommer, take it away.
Thank you, Chairman Surtur and members of the commission. Thank you for your time this evening to walk through the general plan update. Part of this will be something you've heard before, but some of it will be new. And because I don't know how many people are watching this evening, it may be somewhat repetitious for you, but I want to go over some things so that everybody would be up to speed. As you know, we've been working on this for a while. The state of Arizona requires every community to update their general plan once every 10 years. We updated ours last in 2013, and the council would like to have it on the ballot for this 2022 election in the fall. So with that, we're moving ahead to do this. We have a process that we have to go through that's established by the state that talks about how we develop it, citizen participation, meetings that we have, those sorts of things. So citizens have a chance to be involved in setting goals and helping the council set direction for the next 10 years. So this is where we stand right now, tonight. You can see we are at this meeting at the top of the list, assuming it gets approved this evening to move on. We send it out to different reviewing agencies. Right now, there are 22 agencies we will send it to. After that, then they have until late in February to make comments. It would come back to you then at your March meeting. A second meeting in April, they have to be at two different locations. Then it would go on to the council in May or June for their approval, and then on to the ballot in the fall. So that's the timeline we're working on for the project right now. We've all seen and worked with the general plan we have now. It's a lot of black and white, a lot of words, a lot of tables, charts, reads more like a textbook. The one we're proposing to you hopefully reads more like a magazine, more color, more pictures, more graphics, more tables, more color to make it more interesting to read and also easier to follow along. So that's our goal. Then you have that as far as where we are. Also, we're proposing additional goals. Things have changed in the community since you did your 2025 plan, new issues that are emerging and ones that will affect you in the future. So we're touching on those as well. So this is the cover, and those are the table of contents that we have prepared. You saw this last month, and we moved up a couple of chapters, and we moved back a couple of chapters at your direction. So we have all of the data. It's just been rearranged a bit from what you saw previously. So we have 14 chapters, and we have an appendix. And the appendix will be where we put a lot of our citizen participation material that I'm going to touch on in just a minute, because it's important for citizens to know how their input got included into the general plan. So the changes in the updated draft that you have from the draft that you saw last month include some additional editing for style, for uniformity, and some of those pesky changes that Microsoft Editor never picks up when you do Word documents. And thank you to Bree and Sandra for the time you've taken to review it, to help us with some editing on those things. We've had several people look at this, and in fact, it kind of makes it more the town's general plan. If you hired a slick planning consultant from Phoenix, they'd bring you a nice typeset document, and here it is. This way, we all get a chance to review it and edit it and add what we'd like to add. So we did that. We moved those chapters. We changed the town's vision statement. I'll be talking with you about that in a minute. We handed it out to you. The council has been working on that, so there's a change from what you have in your book tonight. We've added references to the state land ownership. That was another issue that you had, is how do we know what's state land and what's private land when we go to start talking about land development? State land is a much different process than private land, and we need to keep that in mind as we look at where the town could grow in the future. We added information on the land use element showing the state land. We updated the land use map. We updated the circulation map to show additional streets and issues that you would like to have done there. We updated the schools map. We updated the street cross-sections to show the one the town is using now instead of the one that you used before. We added information on Tree City. That was an issue about that. And volunteerism. And we added information about places to get additional information about water, websites that you can access to get more information on that. Public transit. The town is starting a micro-transit program and looking at going to a bus system in the future. We've added information on that in there for your review this evening. And we've added the appendix for the citizen surveys. So quite a few changes from the one you saw previously. And this is one that I'm particularly pleased with, our 20-question survey. From when we put it on in December until now, we have 494 people who've responded to our survey. And we have a clear pattern that's emerged, and I'm going to touch on that for a minute because then the other one we had was the top five. You know, we had 357 people have responded to that. So we have 856 people who've taken the time to fill out a survey on our general plan. How many meetings would we have to have to get 856 people to come and fill out a survey? So the surveys online with COVID has really helped provide citizen participation that we wouldn't have had otherwise. So I'm going to walk through some of these and show you. The idea was each of these questions relates to some component, some element of our general plan, so that you can see and the audience can see at home how their comments relate to what we have now put in our general plan. The first one was the town and country image. That has been an issue ongoing. The town is looking at that as far as in the future, a trail system, trying to acquire additional open space, cluster developments, those sorts of things. But that whole issue of town and country, you know, we're surrounded by country and we have sort of a town in the middle. So it's never going to grow as large as it might be because of that state land and the forests and the other things that surround us. But that's an issue that the council needs to keep in mind as we move forward, is how do we blend the old with the new? And we have some ideas for you on that as far as design for buildings and open space that might help with that. The next one is revitalization. That is an issue that has come up repeatedly, both in the 20-question survey and in our top five. And you'll see we have what we've called a reinvestment area in there, where we're encouraging the town to reinvest public funds so that private people will follow, and we can see upgrades in those areas as a partnership between the public and the private sector, both along 69. We have some information about a program that was started some years ago, kind of went dormant, and we're suggesting that come back to help improve the appearance of 69, as well as additional investment in some of our more established neighborhoods, and we've covered that as well. Surrounding land uses and circulation networks and public facilities, that's come up quite a bit. You'll see when we get to our transportation plan, ideas about new streets that would help with that and new circulation elements as far as trails as well. The next one is encouraging light industrial. We have goals, the economic development people have goals, about how to promote that in the future. The need for better-paying jobs comes up repeatedly, and the town is responding to that through its economic development program. And then the balance of residential to employment. How do we get housing growth that matches incomes and disposable income so it's affordable? That's a challenge for every community, and one of the things that the town is looking at is how to reinvest in those older neighborhoods, because that's our most affordable housing, to keep that housing stock, quality housing that people want to live in. So that's something we're looking at, because people feel there need, more work needs to be done there. The next one is public-private property maintenance. You know, we're a community, we're going on 50-year-old homes that were modest homes, some of them when they were built, and they need maintenance. And Fernando and his crew have worked on that. But that's something where staff, where the public feels the staff needs to redouble its effort, that is visible, it's something that we should be addressing. And Fernando has the ability to acquire additional staff to work on that. And then traffic, a reoccurring theme throughout the 20 questions and the five questions is traffic. And you'll see when we look at our transportation map, some of the new improvements that are planned, north-south streets, east-west streets that could help with that in the future, as well as some of the improvements the town is making now on crosswalks and sidewalks and those sorts of things. So that hopefully will get better in the future, and we have some goals that the council is interested in in terms of helping it move in that direction. And then parks, paths, pedestrian facilities. We have trails, but the trails aren't always linked together. We have trails around the community, in the community, but they don't necessarily go through projects to link one to the next. And that's something that we would be looking at as well as the town develops. There's a new park, Awafria Park, planned, and it's on the Awafria, and there's the ability to put trails along that area, new trails that connect existing trails. And some of the issues about street improvements, again, it's an ongoing thing. People feel more work needs to be done there. And you'll see in our circulation element, we've talked about more work to be done, and the council is aware that that is a priority goal. Then we talk about the idea about water. I think that's the biggest single issue that's a reoccurring theme, that and traffic. And we have information on water. We have quite a lengthy section that was crafted by, in large part, by our water manager. We also added, at your suggestion, areas that people could find additional information about water if they have a concern about it. But the bottom line is, you know, the more we grow, the more water we're going to need, and that's an ongoing issue. And it doesn't, we can't stop development. People have a legal right to get a building permit. We can't simply say no. We have to manage it. And we'll be talking a little bit about some things we can do to manage it better potentially than what we're doing right now. But that's a single hot-button issue, and the council has actually hired a different firm, a consulting firm that will be working in the spring with focus groups to help explain to people better the town's situation with regard to water. But that's one the council is taking seriously. Development fees, that's always an issue, and I know Sandra's involved with development impact fee issues. People feel generally the fees that they pay are related to the service that they get. They don't feel generally that they're overcharged by the town, but that they're getting service, and they feel it's value for what they get. And then finally, business sector, that's a continual area of growth. Economic development, Chamber of Commerce and all are working to get more business into that area that's strongly supported by people, and the council sees that and is moving in that direction. And then tourist destination. The town just purchased the old county fairgrounds with the idea of helping make it a tourist destination, along with the event center, to bring more people into the area. That was part of the theme behind buying, spending $2 million to buy that building. And a range of attractions, again, that's something that the council is looking at in conjunction with making it more of a tourist destination. Educational programs, people like the school district that we have, the additional charter schools and all, they're very comfortable with the educational system we have. Quality of life in Prescott Valley has improved over the last 10 years. That's kind of a, some people like it, some people don't. Kind of a lot of people on the fence on that one. It's better because there's more shopping, there's better because there are more activities, but it's more congested, more crowded than it was 10 years ago. But that's something I think people are just going to have to work through. And then moving along here, the services they feel they get from the community are good. They believe public safety is good, and it could get better, as every community could. And communications, that's one we'd heard, you know, the government isn't transparent, or we don't know what's going on. But most people feel they do have good communication with the town. And that's very positive, the town was pleased to see that. So then shifting over to the top five one that we'd have, you have that one as well. We had, as I mentioned, 354 as of December 7th, and I picked 20% to look at. And this is what people like, the top five things. The town's friendly, has a small-town feel, the Four Seasons, they like the new residential developments, they like the parks, they like the health care, they like the library, where we are tonight. Things they'd like to change are some of the things that we just talked about, because this lets people fill in the blank or the other, you just check a box. More sidewalks, more trails, more culverts, more diversity. I thought it was interesting, more "we" and less "me" in terms of the community. A grocery store on the north side, that one came up several times. In fact, I think right here it came up several. I have programs for kids and more thoughtful design. I mean, those are all good things, I think. And right now, you can see all the positive things that people think of the town. Friendly, business-friendly, it's retiree, it's growing, it's thriving, it's peaceful, it's safe, all good things. Some people, though, see areas that could be improved. They feel it's sprawling, it's growing too fast, some of the areas are deteriorating, the town feels overwhelmed, that there's envy of Prescott. I thought that was an interesting Prescott envy, I'd never heard of that before. And bipolar, and I wasn't really sure what to make out of bipolar. But anyway, 10 years from now, you can see what people would like to have in their community, and what they would like to have, we believe, is covered in our general plan, general plan goals and the policies that we're proposing to put forward to the council. You know, friendly, diverse, vibrant, progressive, one-of-a-kind, inclusive, livable, younger, positive, amazing, delightful, all good words. People have a positive image of the town for the future. They have a lot of hope for the future. They think it's going to get better. They trust the mayor, the council, the community to say, we're going to be a better place 10 years from now than we are now. And that's a really positive sign, because you may not find that going into every community. Some people think, well, I don't know if it's going to get better or not. So some of the new goals that we have, we started with the goals that you had in your 2025 general plan, but we've added new goals for community design and appearance, ways that you could enhance the streetscape, make it more attractive for people driving through town, make the buildings more attractive, better landscaping, different kinds of design features that would make them more attractive to people noticing the community. Environmental awareness is one we didn't have a lot on, but we're proposing green building, design-construction standards, lead construction in terms of energy efficiency, updating our building code, water conservation programs, not only the voluntary ones inside the house, but voluntary ones outside the house, different kinds of housing choices. Where we are here tonight could be a much higher-density residential development to give a balance of people who like to live in different kinds of environments in the community. Another issue that came up is sometimes people feel the transition between non-residential and residential is too abrupt, that there ought to be more of a transition so that people living in a neighborhood or a home aren't now backed right up to a shopping center, grocery store, or tire store, or whatever, that more transition needs to be done there. And we've included goals on that. And one of the areas that we are, is that every community who takes federal funding is to be, try to be proactive about preventing housing discrimination. We don't talk about that one a lot. Our general plan doesn't talk about it, but we thought we should put that in there in housing to make a positive statement, that the town is proactive about trying to minimize and eliminate housing discrimination. Also, many of your development regulations were developed in the 1980s and 1990s and haven't changed since then. So probably the council needs to work with the staff to go through and say, what do we need to change in our development regulations to actually accomplish the goals that we're setting out for ourselves? These are goals, but they're not law. Your zoning, your sign codes and all those things are the law. We need to get those two matched up so that you can achieve your goals lawfully by using your regulations. Street maintenance and level of service is another issue we focused on. Many communities have what they call a pavement maintenance program, where they go around and they look at what streets need to be, that need the most attention, based on condition, traffic volumes, those sorts of things, so that you try to keep ahead of damage to your street system. We're recommending that the town take on that kind of a program, because many of your streets right now are, were done all at one time with a surface that is dust-free, but it isn't necessarily a long-term surface. And so how do you upgrade those systems? And then establish those reinvestment areas, as we mentioned, in trying to update the improvement of appearance along State Route 69. So those are all new goals that are in there that weren't in your previous one. Water conservation is one that we're working on. The town has the Water Use It Wisely type program, and we're proposing that that be increased in the future, and that we use, as far as landscaping materials, landscaping materials that are indigenous to our area, to our Prescott Active Management area, so it minimizes the amount of water they need. And we are revegetating like it used to be, but with new vegetation, so the town will actually be greener and more like the area around it in the future. So this is our master circulation plan. Sorry the audience can't see it too well, but it shows up fairly well on your screen, I think. And the things, two important things about this are, look at all the dashed lines. Those are all, for instance, Santa Fe Loop would be a new east-west street. Jasper will come down from the north, come right down along Glassford Hill Road and hook in there right about the Ranch Road, for Sundog Ranch Road. Some of the roads would come to the east. You'll see some of the roads up in Pronghorn and Viewpoint, we're proposing that would go east and west to try to connect so that there's three interchanges there. We'd like to spread traffic among all three of them, if that's possible, to try to minimize all of the traffic at the one intersection that we're seeing right now. But on the east side, you can see the roads are all existing, not a lot of dashed lines there, and they're all smaller streets, minor collectors, minor arterials, collectors, because we don't have very much right-of-way. The bigger streets, the new streets, will have more right-of-way so they can have more lanes, plus bike lanes, plus landscaping, center medians, all those things that you need to carry traffic. And Glassford Hill Road, Viewpoint, will be expanded. The one in particular is in the lower left-hand corner, right below the word Prescott, the dashed green line. That is the Sundog Ranch Road Loop. That's something that the Central Yevon Bay County Metropolitan Planning Organization is working on, and they've worked on it for a while, they're actually coming up with the final design for that. That should take traffic off of State Route 69 and help it go past that. But traffic volume and commercial development go together. So that road may have people bypassing your commercial developments or the commercial developments in Prescott, and people coming from Prescott Valley will come on Prescott Lakes Road where Prescott has shopping centers. So there's a trade-off there, traffic and economic development, traffic and sales tax. So, but you need traffic, you need sales tax, so how do you balance the two? But that's a very important road as far as future east-west traffic from Prescott Valley to Prescott, as is along the north side, you'll see where some new roads are planned as well on the north side, because most of your growth is going to move further north. And we need to anticipate and prepare for that with a new arterial street system in that area. So that's one that we see a lot of possible positive future changes as the town grows by able to upgrade the street system that the town has. This is our land use map, and we've made some changes in that as a result of your recommendations. You'll see in the text, every time we have one of those PADs where it has state land, we put a little statement in there about the state ownership of this property. And although it looks like we have lots of room to grow there in all those blue areas that say PAD, much of it is actually owned by the state, which is what this map shows, which you have in your material. So in order for the town to achieve some of the goals that we're looking at, we have to work with the state land department in order to get land for right-of-way, for new streets, or land for additional development to resolve some of those things, like the town would like to build a new park called the Awafria Park. You have it in your material. That land is owned by the state of Arizona, and we would have to work out how to get that land and then how to connect it with bike paths and trails to other areas within the community. So that is an important thing that we will be considering in the future as well. So the next steps, tonight, hopefully we can talk to you about this, get any additional comments you may have, we can make whatever changes we need to, and if you would agree to forward it on, it will go to those reviewing agencies. There will probably be more neighborhood meetings in the spring, hopefully post-COVID, post-Delta variant, post-Omicron, so we can have more meetings. But if not, maybe another survey or two would help with that. And then it'll come to you in March and April. You have to have two meetings, then it'll come to the council in May and June, and then it'll be on the ballot in the fall. So with that, I'm sorry for such a long presentation, but I wanted to be sure we've covered things that have changed since your last presentation. And at this point in time, I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Before we get to questions, Wayne, I just wanted to say thank you. I know we were a little behind on this process, and in fact, this evening, we have basically a draft ready for approval speaks volumes, and I just want to say thank you for all your hard work. Thank you to town staff as well. But in particular, I know you led the charge on this, so thank you.
You're very welcome.
With that, we'll start with questions from the commission or things, you know, we want to point out or anything like that with the draft. Who wants to start?
Well, I will, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Commissioner Griffiths, go for it.
We all look at you.
Okay, let's roll.
Okay, let's roll. How many reviewing agencies are there, Mr. Ballmer?
Twenty-two.
Are they each given a real book?
They will be given a real book.
And then what is their timeline for comments?
It's normally 60 days. However, we're going into the holiday season, so we've extended it to February 25th.
And then without naming off each reviewing agency, can you just share who a few of them would be?
Sure. It's the surrounding communities, the county, the Northern Arizona Council of Governments, the state of Arizona, State Land Department, State Department of Water Resources, Bureau of Land Management, Prescott National Forest, basically all of those entities around us, the Metropolitan Planning Organization, the schools, the community college, everybody who we think may have an interest in the community. For instance, the Contractor Association, they have an interest in the community. The Contractor Association is on the list. We probably have actually more, you know, we've included the Urban Land Institute from Phoenix. We've included the American Planning Association because we want, we would rather send out more than too few and not have people come back to us later and say, well, how come you didn't include me? It's better to kind of overkill right now because if anybody has any questions, now we have a broader range of people to get them to us.
Are they given the book along with a personalized letter requesting their?
Yes. Yes, they will be getting a letter signed by Mr. Gonzalez that will ask for their comments.
How about, do we send out a book to our very own police department and what about CAFMA?
They, yes.
Oh, they're on the list?
They're on the list. Yes. And we have enough for every department in the, in the town. So everybody who contributed information will get one. So make sure we have their information in here correctly. I, you know, we got information from, from Central Yevon Bay Metropolitan Planning Organization, and I put it in there, and then I sent out the wrong draft to Vinnie to look at, and stressed him out about, you didn't include my comments. And I found it, and yes, we did. And I'm glad he said that because now we could correct it before it went too much further.
On the surveys, I, number one, it's fantastic that so many people have taken this survey. I only wish that we had thought about maybe asking an age classification. I think that would have told us a lot more about their survey responses. But 10 years from now, we can do that on the next one.
Well, but you can actually do that again in the spring.
Okay.
We can, we use Survey Monkey, and it's, it's not that difficult to set up. So if you like what responses we got, just like that, say, boy, I wish we'd asked different questions, we can do a different survey.
Wonderful. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Ballmer.
And, and thank you for all of your comments. I appreciate them. We've included them in.
I see Commissioner Roberts has some.
About homeowners associations.
Pardon me?
Homeowners association.
We have not, in that we can. I just didn't have the contact information for some of them.
That'd be a good idea.
We'll see if we can get at least a larger one.
Yeah, there's only three, I believe, anyway.
There's more than that. Yeah.
I'm thinking only the new ones.
So, yeah, we, we have quite a few.
Yes.
Anybody else on this side of the dais? Do you have anything? Okay, we'll go on to this side. Commissioner Rutherford, do you have anything?
Yes, I'm pleased to see the comments about more PR on water. I think a lot of the comments that have come in on this and that you see in the newspaper are based on a lack of knowledge of how much we can do. I mean, for instance, we can't tell Jasper that they suddenly have a, a lower density. That's out of our hands. But we do need to do more as far as being sure that we have found adequate sources. But I, I think PR is important because people simply don't understand that so much of this is the result of what the state has done.
And, and that's a key point, that the town has the lawfully operated system under the state's guidelines because we have people who are depending on us to do that and other property owners who have a legal right to water that they're expecting that the town would provide. And if we don't provide it, I think the town would be in trouble for that group of people.
I'm very pleased with the balance in this. For instance, safe paths to school as well as more senior housing and family-oriented and housing for people who aren't in upper income. That we do need multiple family, even though it does increase density because if the people are working for lower-paying jobs, obviously they cannot afford more expensive housing.
And we have room right around this building to accommodate that type of need.
No, I, I like the balance of, of the approach in this. Also, the economic development factor of getting better paying jobs for Prescott Valley.
Yes. Thank you. Anything else?
No, I, I think you've done an excellent job.
Ms. King, do you have anything?
I just want to say thank you so much for adding the links on the water and conservation. I think that will be very helpful. And wanted to confirm that the agencies that these are going to be sent to for review will include some of these water agencies, correct? And they will come back with comments and whatnot. So they will have their finger on this to make sure that the planning is being done accordingly.
Yes.
Great. Thank you.
Pastor Rankin?
I'm, I'm hoping that as we come into the spring and more open houses are done, that we're, Sandy was interested in the, in the age and the responses. I'm kind of interested in the amount of time that people have lived in our community because so many of the people that have come here really haven't spent the time to look into something like this, to, to show what our limitations are, you know, where we started, where we're at now. And when you're new to a community, your automatic reference is where you just came from. And our community is definitely unique. And so I'm hoping that maybe we can get more feedback also from people and that the people that have been here the shorter period of time that maybe haven't seen what has happened will get more involved, even in the, the town offers some great programs to instruct members of the community as to what goes on here and how it works and why. And I hope more people will take advantage of that.
And, and we, you'll note, we listed some of those programs in the plan under volunteer activities that people can be involved with.
Commissioner Rutherford?
Yes, I would like to see a little more PR given to the Citizens Academy. That is such a valuable resource.
Definitely. And, and the town has a, a program focused just on that.
Mm-hmm. It's a good one.
Yes. And they didn't do it for the last couple of years, so now they're trying to ramp that up.
I had a few things, Wayne, and I do apologize since I wasn't at the last meetings and having the final draft here to read and go over. Page 47, 48 is some APS maps, and this is in the land use element.
Yes.
Looking at those maps, though, they're from February 2nd, 2006.
Yes.
I definitely think that's a little too outdated for this general plan. And I'm hoping that APS, because I'm sure they're one of the reviewing agencies, will provide us some better updated maps.
And, and we will be asking them because the folks we spoke to at the level we spoke to basically said those are the most recent maps they have.
Really? Okay, that's. Then with the wireless telecommunications plan, I know, of course, it's part of town code, but I know there's been some changes with regard to federal law with regard to wireless telecommunications. And maybe Fernando, also, that's something that we should look at to, to put into town code and to update the general plan because really, from what I'm understanding, we really can't deny a cell phone tower due to public safety per federal law.
Right.
So I think that should probably be somewhere, you know, you know, in, in here or in, in town code for the future. Also, with the land use element, you brought up state trust land. I, I want to make clear in this, in that element, that state trust land can be developed.
Oh, yes.
And maybe we should put something in there about, you know, how it ties back to the, you know, maybe just a smidge or even a link to the original 1912 constitution for the state of Arizona, that if state trust land, well, the, it can be sold, and the proceeds of which go to education in this state. But I want to make, be clear that state trust land can be developed, but it's, it's a lengthy process and basically what it would do to do so.
Okay. We might be able to put something along that line on page 61.
I agree, though, with Commissioner King. Links are always better than full, full verbiage, but definitely something along those lines. Another thing I noticed, and I don't know when we're going to be able to do this, when are we getting the 2020 census results? Because I'm noticing that that is not in here.
You're, you're correct. It isn't because we don't have them yet.
Okay.
That's one of the things we're hoping that by the time this comes back to you in March of next year.
Okay.
We'll be able to update that, and we will update who, who will be the chair and the vice chair of the commission, and how many survey results we finally get, and, and those kinds of things that we know we're going to have to go back and look at in this year.
I, this probably, probably tied into the same thing, but I noticed that in the housing element, the, we're using the median price of a home from 2020.
Yes.
Which I feel probably is outdated compared to this year. So I don't know if that's something that we can look at after, you know, we're almost done with this year, that we can actually sneak that in into 2021.
Hopefully, we would have the 2021 data.
Okay.
For 2022, when you get this back as a final.
Okay, that's good. A few things also, in the parks element, we mentioned Glassford Hill.
Which page?
This would be 146. I, I was reading this, and I was kind of shocked that we mentioned Glassford Hill, but we don't mention the Summit Trail. And so I find that rather odd because that's a huge, I mean, that's a draw to, you know, that I think that we would want to put in here. But I did not see it actually in that element except just a little description of Glassford Hill.
Okay.
And so then one other thing that I noticed right off the bat, and this is 148, under private recreational facilities, we mentioned the Prescott Golf and Country Club. Well, it's no longer called the Prescott Golf and Country Club. It's called the Prescott Golf Club, and it's not in Dewey-Humboldt. It's actually located within the town limits of Prescott Valley. And then we also failed to mention Quellwood Greens, of course, which is also within the town limits of Prescott Valley, another private entity. So just wanted to throw that out there. I, with regard to water, I agree with Commissioner Rutherford that we need to definitely do a little bit more PR there. But I definitely want to be clear with everybody, you know, listening, that we cannot consider water with regard to development with, for planning and zoning. It's something that is actually against the law. I want to be clear about that. And I think, I don't know if we should just put that in big old letters in the general plan that cannot be discussed when considering development.
We, I, we.
Because I know that's part of the biggest confusion that I think people have is that they think that we should be and we can't because it's state, and we have no control over that.
And, and we are a water company governed by laws, and those laws come locally and from the state. To do something else might be doing it illegally compared to the state.
So that was kind of my two cents. Anybody else?
Thank you for those.
All right. At this point in time, Wayne, if you, unless you don't have anything, I'll invite public comment. Anybody wishing to comment on this draft plan?
I just had one in closing, which is that tonight is probably the last night we will be visiting together. My contract is up this Friday, and I just wanted to say thank you to all of you for your help in putting this together. It isn't a one-person task to do this, you know, it's, everybody gets a hand. And I particularly wanted to thank Joe Scott, who's been my assistant and team member for this. He did the maps. He's done a lot of the graphics, and you wouldn't have the document you have tonight without his help. So I want to give a shout out to Joe. And, and just, and thank you for your time and attention.
All right. Thank you. So with that, do we have any public comments on this draft for general plan 2035? Seeing none, bring it back to the commission. And this evening, we actually have to vote on, on this. So is there a motion that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend to town staff and town council that the next steps in the public participation timeline be taken for consideration of the draft Prescott Valley General Plan 2035 with the suggestions provided by the commission?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Rutherford?
Yes.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Griffiths?
Yes.
Commissioner Laney?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Rankin?
Yes.
Chairperson Zercher?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So moving on to public hearing item number two, and we also hear action item number one at the same time. I'll read both into the record. Public hearing item number two, zoning map change 21-005. Upon the application of Victory Development and Bowman Consulting, a request for zoning map change, ZMC 21-05, from Commercial Neighborhood Sales and Services, C2 P A D, to Commercial Minor Industrial, C3 P A D, on a 1.95 acre parcel located at the northwest corner of Eastridge and Truwood Drive in Prescott Valley. Action item number one, preliminary development plan 21-010. Upon the application of Victory Development and Bowman Consulting, a request for preliminary development plan for a proposed new 16,100 square foot auto body and paint shop with associated parking on approximately 1.95 acres to be located at the northwest corner of Eastridge and Truwood Drive in Prescott Valley. And presenting this evening is Fernando Gonzalez, who is the Development Services Director. Fernando, take it away.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the commission. As stated, this is ZMC 2105 is located in the Eastridge subdivision. Actually, it's a business park, and it's generally located, like you said, east of Truwood and Eastridge Drive. It is on a 1.95 gross acre parcel. This is a map showing the general location. It's right across from Little Dealer Little Prices, next to a bunch of other businesses that are in the, in the area. There are actually no, there was a neighborhood meeting, no formal support or opposition to this project. Like various town council actions went to develop this property over in Eastridge in 1988. Today, Eastridge has similar retail offices, commercial businesses, and other locations like Tractor Supply, Auto Works, Physical Therapists. This application is also, as said, PDP 21-10. Findings is that town staff finds that all the requested changes adhere to the town of Prescott Valley General Plan 2025 as applicable to ZMC 21-05, as approved. It is, here's a site plan actually showing where it is on Truwood and Eastridge off Highway 69. There's a landscaping plan, general landscaping plan, looks, shows all the proposed landscaping, detention area. There's photometrics showing lighting, exterior. And this is the building elevation, showing the type of structure of building that's going to be erected on the site. Town staff at this point recommends the commission consider approving with the conditional approval of ZMC 21-05. Town staff also recommends that all motions be approved for PDP 21-10 with the conditions set forth. And those conditions are that town council will approve the final development, development plan in accordance with town code, Article 1319, consistent with a preliminary development plan, PD 21-10. All development shall be in conformance with the town codes and regulations, including screening, lighting requirements stated in Article 1326 and 1326A. And that goes for both. Thank you. And that goes for both, thank you.
Representative of Bowman Consulting is here to answer any questions you may have, and I'd be happy to answer anything you may have at this time.
Thank you, Fernando. We'll start with the question.
Mr. Chairman, out of an abundance of caution, I am going to recuse myself for a possible conflict of interest.
Okay. So we'll start with questions from the commission. Who would like to start?
Sandy, how about you?
Come on, Sandy.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Fernando Gonzalez, thanks.
No problem, Sandy.
I am somewhat confused in the recommendations where the commissions are, or their conditions are listed. It's not clear under item two. It says including screening and lighting requirements of Articles 1326 and 1326A. There's quite a few site development standards under 1326, and I think for clarification purposes, those need to be spelled out to the nth degree, and we need to discuss those tonight and make sure the applicant understands each and every one of those standards.
Okay, that's not a problem. Site development standards under 1326 speaks to parking.
Right.
Screening, landscaping, and parking, like, screening of mechanical equipment. 1326A is specific to our dark sky ordinance, and that's what the lighting is.
So the screening, there's different variations of screening, so I don't know what sort of stipulation we're going to make this applicant adhere to.
Okay, well, screening actually is only required for items that are going to be in open storage, so unless they're going to be storing stuff on the property, which we had a conversation in, they do have an area that is going to be screened 100% with storage. Any other areas that are not storage does not have to be screened to 100%. Screening, again, is the mechanical equipment, it has to be screened to the height of the units themselves, which is also noted as part of their building process, their plans, when they submit those, that'll be reviewed at that time. Lands, the screening for the refuge collection area is also something that's being reviewed as part of their building seminal plans, and of course, as I stated, the storage, like yard storage, or storage of cars that are being waiting on for repairs, or have collisions, or parts, or stuff like that, that they'll have a yard specific for their.
They would be required to be screened.
They will be required, and they are aware of that. We made these known to them at the initial project review and as part of additional reviews.
Because that's a huge and attractive nuisance.
That is correct, and that's why all of that is being, is going to be reviewed as part of their building permit process.
One more question.
Sure.
You started it, Mr. Chairman. I'm not familiar enough, Mr. Gonzalez, with the disposal requirements for paint and how that affects going down the sewer for this particular business. Who, are there controls for all of that?
You know, I think the representative may be better, I'm not 100% sure on the disposal.
Well, actually, no, we'll wait for you, I'll, I'll, I'll invite you guys up here shortly.
Okay. Yeah, may be better served to answer that question, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Laney.
I'd like to go back. We're talking about changing C2 zoning to, from commercial to minor industrial. And to me, that is not minor. We're going from a planned sales and service to industrial, and why are those compatible?
Well, the reason for this site specifically, it's actually a higher density general sales and service, where we have C1, which is a neighborhood service. C2 is a little additional separation between the, the, like, residential component, so you have the C1, C2 that this is. C3 is actually just minor industrial, not really industrial where their PM, and this use is only allowed by matter of right in a C3 zoning district, and that's why we're changing over to this zoning.
But you're still going from commercial to industrial.
To minor.
The word industrial is still there.
Minor industrial, that's correct, but we are specifically looking at this specific PDP for this specific use, so they couldn't use it for any other industrial type of use.
And there's no other land within PV that would, would fit this particular zoning that they need? It has to be just right there?
I believe that's what they chose. I, I'm sure there, there is other C3, but the applicant can speak to that.
Real quick, actually, it looks like if we, like with where Auto Works is right next to YEI, that looks like it's C3 PAD.
It is, it is next door.
But they don't have a storage yard.
Well, they store vehicles, though, that are being worked on still in that parking lot.
Correct, and those would be screened from view.
But that, I mean, they don't, that, but Auto Works isn't required to screen, though, correct?
Oh, no, but they do have, they do have parts and parts, and they do require to have some screening on their site as well. So all the screening mechanism that we have for Auto Works will be in conjunction with the same business. The standards are basically the same.
Okay. Any other questions of staff? All right, seeing none, I'll invite the applicant up. And if you want, both of you can come up if you'd like.
Chairman.
Go ahead and give, give us your name for the record.
Nathan Larson, Bowman Consulting. So to speak to a couple of the issues, Tim Craftson is here with Victory Real Estate, he is the developer, and he can speak to the paint issue. But the other, the screening is done, so it's, the cars, when they come in, they are behind the screen wall. The parts are in a separate storage area that's part of the building, so there won't be any parts or, like, materials that are out in the parking lot, it's just the cars. The cars that come to these facilities, about 90% of them drive in themselves, they don't do any engine work here or tire work, so it's all paint and auto body repairs. So, as I said, 90% drive in themselves, about 10% are brought in on a tow truck, but they have to send it any, to another facility to do any engine or tire work. So the majority of the work here is work that people can drive their own cars in.
Tim Craftson of Victory Development, thanks for letting us come and present to you all tonight. So on the, on the paint, kind of what I tell town councils and planning commissions across the country is, the paint system that Caliber uses is state-of-the-art, industry-leading paint filtration equipment, and really, it's not, you wouldn't picture paint kind of spilling on the floor, that kind of thing, they've got mechanisms for, to deal with that, that's company-wide. Caliber, just a little bit of background on them, they've got about 1,400 locations across the country, they're the biggest collision repair player in the country, and getting bigger, and so you get a big national brand with big national credit, and they do things the right way. A, because they're a good company, and B, because they have to. Yeah, you know, you can't get away not doing it the right way anymore. So anyway, their filtration equipment is top of the line, it's really an air intake filtration system that, that filters it through a complex system, and then, and then will vent it out the top of the building, so you don't have paint on the ground, getting into the sanitary sewer system, any of that kind of thing.
So are we venting VOCs out into the air?
Well, what.
Am I going to be afraid to drive down?
What I say to that is the filtration system that they use all over the country, the state of California is good with it. So usually people say, oh, okay, California's good with it, we're good with it. So if that helps at all, I know that's not very technical, but.
I don't have to put masks on when I drive by your corner?
No, you won't see anything, you won't smell anything, you know, I talk about sight, kind of the five senses, you know, and I, and I think even, even the way that these things look, if, if it didn't have the name Caliber Collision on the front of it, you could think it was an office building, or, you know, you, you know, that's just the way the design standards are now, anyway, so.
So how many, is this your first collision center?
No, is this our first collision center?
No, it sounds like you have 1,400 around the United States.
Well, we're a developer that develops for Caliber, so we've done, gosh, I don't know how many we've done, probably 50 to 100 over the past five years or so across the country.
Why Prescott Valley?
Well, that's a good question. So the, the way that we figure out where Caliber wants to go is Caliber takes their cue from the insurance companies, so the GEICO's and the progressives and the USAA's and all those kinds of, of companies, and they say, hey, we have customers in this market, there's a demand, we need you to have a facility here so we can service our customers. So basically, the residents of Prescott Valley have said, hey, insurance companies, there's, there's an unmet demand here, and I'm sure there's, there's, I, I actually don't, don't even know what the collision repair scene is in Prescott Valley, but it's, it's probably at or over capacity, and there's demand for more. And some of these big insurance companies, you have to have, you have to be certified, and so you've got to have specific lighting levels, and there's a whole lineup of things that you have to be able to meet as a facility, to be able to have these insurance companies send their business to your, your, your shop, and so, you know, Caliber meets all of those, and, so that's how. Good question.
I was concerned with the neighborhood outreach. It says that the applicant held a neighborhood outreach meeting on November the 4th. Didn't anybody show up?
No one attended the neighborhood meeting. It was held here at the library, no one attended. We did go meet one of the neighbors on site after the meeting, they weren't able to find the meeting at the library, but were, we were able to meet with them afterwards, and they expressed general consent, general support for the project overall. They didn't have really any issues that we heard from them, and overall, generally, we were in support.
We did have one person that did show up to one of the meetings, and he was Little Dealer Little Prices, and he was here to show support for this project. He was just at the wrong meeting, but he did come in, and I did have a conversation with him, and he expressed his, his approval, anyway. Just to.
I have one more question. Have you already purchased this lot?
We haven't. We, we don't want to purchase it until we've got full, you know, planning commission and council approval, so.
That's subject to.
That's, yeah, that's right. We, we don't want to buy a piece of property that we can't build this building on, for sure.
Gentlemen, I, I think our, the concern coming from the ladies is more is, as you enter Prescott Valley, obviously, Little Dealer Little Prices there, that's kind of the first thing that you can actually see in your facility would be the next, and I don't think I have any questions at all about the type of facility, or what you're looking to do. The location is, is, is great for that, but the, the screening of the, of, of anything that would be a, a negative for the town, because it's something that we fight all the time, including what we're doing now with our 2035 plan, that 69 corridor is very important to us, so I, I think that we would, and I'm sure the council will say the same thing, is that the, the screening so that it's a, a positive view coming from the highway. I think as you head east, going away from Prescott Valley, you're probably not even going to notice it, but coming up the hill into that, that process is going to be, or that, that view is going to be very important, and, and I hope you have much success. I think it, I, I feel that it fits in really well, but that screening is going to be, I think, very important from both us and the town.
Mr. Chairman.
Hold on just a second, I'll let them respond.
Commissioner through the chair. The screening on this, so this is a site plan, the screening is only on the south and the east side of the property, the north side is open, it will show the facade of the building, it's a very attractive building in our opinion, and so that's what you're going to see, and then on, along Truwood, there's going to be a screen fence, but there will also be landscaping in front of that fence, so you'll have the landscaping within a screening fence behind it, so.
Okay.
How to say, we, you know, screen the screen, I mean, your comments and concerns are very common, and, you know, are concerns that we're used to dealing with in every, every development that we do.
Hold on, Commissioner Laney, Commissioner Roberts is putting in patiently, and then we'll go to Commissioner Laney.
I'm not, I'm not too concerned about the paint, because the state controls it anyway, if I'm not mistaken.
That's right.
Toxicous. The other thing, how many, how much footage are you going to have between the fencing and?
I'm sorry, how many what?
How much footing of landscaping will be in front of the fencing or screening?
Commissioner through the chair, it varies, it's between 15 and all the way up to 70 feet, depending on which section of the site plan it's in.
That's accurate. Thank you.
Commissioner Laney.
Mr. Chairman, I feel to alleviate some of the concerns, that it would be prudent for the applicant to show us pictures of other facilities they have in other parts of the country, so we.
We're so glad you asked.
We see it, thank you. A colored picture. This is, this is reality, it's not a draw.
Say a picture's worth a thousand words, and these help a lot.
While they're doing that, Commissioner Griffiths, go ahead and answer your question, go ahead and ask your question.
I have one more question on the landscaping. What happens in a lot of these cases when we have out-of-area great developers coming in? You bring in and coordinate landscaping with landscape architects that are not even familiar with our types of plants, and I feel that that's critically important to Prescott Valley, and we need to involve local architects for plantings that can take off and grow and help your painting facility versus something that's not going to make it, is a slow grower and could die.
Commissioner through the chair, thank you for that. We actually have the, so I'm the civil engineer, Tim is with the development team, but I'm the civil engineer. We're out of Phoenix area, and our landscape architect is also out of the Phoenix area, they're familiar with, they've done a lot of stuff in northern Arizona, though, and they're very familiar with the plant materials. They both went to school, both of the architects there went to school in Arizona, so that's a big portion of their studying is the plant materials that work throughout all of Arizona, so.
Thank you.
Commissioner Laney.
Looking at this picture, and it's really very nice, on the right-hand side, I see a fence. Am I correct? Is that a block wall fence that I'm looking at here?
On, on the left or the right side? So.
I think, I think it's on our right, it would be probably your left.
My right, your left.
Yeah, so on this picture, this is a, it's a picture from Litchfield Park. The one on the left is a gate. That city did not require us to have an opaque gate, they didn't want an opaque gate in that, in that case. There is a block wall, Litchfield Park's requirements required us to do a block wall. In this case, we are doing a, a fence with vinyl slats to provide the screening.
Okay, now, going back to the block wall, is that eight-foot?
It was a six-foot block wall.
Six-foot, okay, and it's.
And these aren't, these don't represent, obviously, exactly what we're doing here, these are just similar.
Right, I know that. I just want to see what you've done somewhere else.
Sorry, I always had a thought, like you had a bunch ready to go. Figure out the Prescott Valley. Okay, I'm sorry, maybe we might have, we have more, but may not have them ready right right.
But even having that color definitely helps, and I, definitely, thank you.
So are you thinking block wall for this facility, or chain link with slats?
Yeah.
Whatever we tell them.
We're going to do the chain link with slats, and then have landscaping in front of the, in front of the, that screen.
Would you consider something else?
Such as like, I would say, I would actually say, instead of block wall, like image vinyl, like a, like a.
Absolutely.
Vinyl fencing type of thing that would look a lot more.
Wood, vinyl, chain link with slats, we're.
I think we, what we're saying is that we don't, I don't, I'm hearing that we probably do not want to see a chain link with slats there at that location, something a little bit, and again, I think to echo what Vice Chair Rankin said. And again, I think to echo what Vice Chair Rankin said, you know, you guys heard that, you know, we're looking at this next general plan, we're really concerned about community design and appearance, and especially upgrading the appearance along 69. And definitely, we don't want to kind of go back, we want to go forward, and definitely chain link, I don't, I think would be going backwards. Something a little nicer looking would be something preferred in terms of going forward.
So this project actually has a vinyl, a white vinyl fence. You can kind of see it there in the background. Can you, are you able to look through more of these? You can see a little bit of-
I see that, and that looks really good.
This one's got more doors than the one that we'll have, we're proposing here, but-
How many employees does a collision center like this normally bring in?
I think it's like 12 to 15, full-time.
So any other questions on fencing? So kind of, you know, we can add it to our stip, you know, stipulation, but basically, instead of chain link, you know, preference would be, you know, probably vinyl or something, you know, similar to that other entity that you, you know, the other one that you showed us. Anything else on that? Am I missing anything?
We want Prescott Valley Envy, not Prescott Envy. So, no, in all seriousness, though, it would be great to be able to partner with you guys and bring something to our community here that looks nice, because when people are coming up from the valley, it's something, you know, that they're going to see. So it, it means a lot to our community. So if, if you guys could, you know, make sure that you're taking that into consideration, that, that would be huge. I, I think this is a great thing. I come from a military family, and I have USAA, and I know that they are pretty strict as to which types of collision centers that you can be able to use for repair, and Caliber Collision is, is one that is on their list. So I think that this would be great for the community, as long as, you know, you guys are all, you know, comfortable with how it's going to look and the, the state regulations with the paint and everything.
And I think honestly, really, you know, your landscaping plan is great, but I would argue that you need more landscaping along the 69 corridor as opposed to down at Eastridge and Truwood, as a, you know, put more up there than down below.
And we're, we're really happy to do whatever landscape, landscape-wise. We just defer to our landscape architects and what the city likes us to do.
No, and you guys, I think have, you know, great, I mean, I think it's a great plan. I just think it needs to, we just need to focus a little bit more to the 69 area than Eastridge.
I hope I don't ever have to visit.
But if you do, you'll be glad to have it.
Is there anything else, gentlemen, that you'd like to add or highlight?
Not unless you all have any more questions for us.
I guess for clarification, and Mr. Gonzalez, maybe we could add corrective, correct into the stipulations. I would prefer to see a block wall.
I would too.
And I'd like to hear from my other commissioners.
That's one concern I have is the fencing, because it's trying to make 69 look nice, and fencing would cheapen it, I'm afraid to say that, because I'm for the program. You need a collision shop.
But I, I would agree that either a block wall or vinyl fencing, because there's some really nice-looking vinyl fencing, and even if they did metal fencing, it would be fine.
Right, as long as we can make the stipulation if the fence could be opaque, basically, and leave it at that, as long as it's not chain link with slats.
Yep. I think that-
Or wood.
It would give them, it'd give them the opportunity to go back and take a look.
Or wood.
Or wood, yes, correct.
All right. And I think we can actually add that to stipulation number two, because that covers shielding as well. So with that, just we'll basically add that real quick, that basically the screening needs to be opaque and no, no chain link or wood. Anything else from the commission? All right. I don't see anyone from the public here, or else I'd open the floor to public hearing, and I don't see anyone from the public, so we'll bring it back to the commission. So first thing would be, is there a motion to approve zoning map change 21-005?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bethford?
I have recused myself.
Commissioner King? Yes. Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Griffiths?
Yes.
Commissioner Laney?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Rankin?
Yes.
Chairperson Surtur?
And yes. Moving on to Preliminary Development Plan 21-010 with stipulations one through two, with the additional verbiage added to stipulation number, or condition number two, is there a motion for, to approve PDP 21-010?
And actually, if someone could say the-
The verbiage again?
Exact verbiage you want added?
I'll go ahead and add that real quick, Christy. So that is the requirement that the screening be a solid screening, that it's opaque, no wood or chain link. And correct me if I'm wrong, Commissioner. We're good? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve PDP 21-010 based on the stipulations as outlined.
All right. Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner King?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Griffiths?
Yes.
Commissioner Laney?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Rankin?
Yes.
Chairperson Surtur?
Yes. Both. Moving on to item number nine, call to public. Seeing that nobody's here for a call to public, we'll move on to item number 10, which is adjournment of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Before we adjourn, as I typically do every December, I just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion adjourn. Motion of the Christian screen.
All right. It's moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. We stand adjourned.